I'm Walton, okay. Well, I thank everybody for being here for this workshop. Need a motion to adopt the agenda.
No mood.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence is there, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett, all in favor? That's a four oh vote. Uh, that brings us to the mayor's report. Anything, Mr. Mayor?
No report.
Okay, council reports, Mr. Lawrence? Anything, Mr. Glavine?
No report.
Mr. Barrett, anything?
No, sir.
We have no council reports. It brings us to citizens' comments. Anybody on my left, your right, wish to address the council? Anybody on my left, your right? Anybody on my right, your left?
Anybody in the room? You might as well say anything.
Is anybody south of the bay? Okay, we have no one, uh, to comment during citizens' comments. It brings us to the policy agenda. Uh, if the clerk would read that item, please.
Subject matter of the meeting is to discuss the ordinance to address compensation schedule, pay rates, and dispersment of sick leave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's all yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You know, in examining where we were at the end of FY21 and going into FY22, we had the thought of looking at both the compensation and the, uh, the possible, possibility of, uh, moving, you know, everyone's salary up. And this is sort of a result. Again, this is a workshop, I think we've, we're ready to talk back and forth. Basically, some things that, from a structural standpoint, we tried to simplify. I think part of this, uh, Exhibit A is a new compensation schedule that's made up of men's and max of a, sort of a complicated thing in the past. Each grade, and there were jobs who were classified by grade, not so much by department, uh, from 10 to 40 something. And then they had some steps within each grade. That started with step one of, uh, Section A, going up to step 16. And B, step one, going up to, uh, step 16. And there's some, uh, arrangement for the, I guess, step C within a grade. Well, what you see here in this amendment is the high and low of those, uh, those grades. We didn't change any jobs. The grades that were in step 10 before are still in step 10 now. Just that this is sort of a, a way to, uh, simplify the grades. We looked at other folks, like City of Biloxi, grades high and minimum max. So, that, uh, brings us to what we thought we could, uh, do for our employees. I think the last reading we gave you, uh, does everybody have this piece of paper? It talks about, uh, numbers in each grade and, uh, what we thought we could do percentage-wise. I don't really want to get into that right now, but basically, we looked at each, each job, each grade, and tried to... Bring, you know, bring up every...
Are we supposed to have that purple word?
I think I gave it to you last week. We can get it, some copies again.
Okay, so we're nothing was up here?
All right, but let's, let's cut to the chase here. We figured we could work through. We did make some arrangements that, uh, I guess the biggest part in FY22 were a number of the low-grade 10s and 11s that were making, uh, less than $12 an hour. We got them up to $12.50 in the first pass for FY22. So, the, uh, lower grades from 10 to 12 that were making less than $12.50 an hour, we got them up to $12,000, to $12.50. And that's part of the existing budget right now. Looking at it again, to be more competitive and take care of, of what we can do, we brought that number up to about $13.25. And these tables and scales that, they're gonna get your copies of, reflect that. The, the lower grades, the more percentage you have as far as increase. Bottom line is, we'll, we'll ask you, once we decide on the structure of the, the compensation schedule, uh, to pass an amendment to apply these raises to each person by grade. And that we'll, um, roll into, hopefully, the first pay period in January. Is that not right, Diane? The first pay period, we would try to affect all of these raises. Right? First full pay period? Okay. Okay, let me stop. Let y'all get a distribution of that. So, George, we had asked, you know, what can we do for our employees a while back, even before the, the start of FY22? Basically, these numbers reflect, uh, raises from 4.5% to six point, and maybe a little bit more than that, based on what you were in September of, uh, 2021.
I got a question, uh, for you. The original low end was how much that you moved to $12.50 for the first...
Oh, some of it was like $11.40 an hour. We rolled into FY22, raising that up to $12.50. And so, they got a bump. You know, sometimes, you know, it was as much as $24,000 they were making, you know, in FY22. We got him to FY21, excuse me, to 22 at $26,000. Well, the, we even did better than that. We got that, that number to $27,150, I believe. Anyway, that reflects a pretty good jump if you were making $24,000 up to... So, they're gonna get at least $13.25 an hour for, for majority of those, uh, people, yeah.
Equals the $27.2 or something like that?
$27... $27.2, I think.
Okay, and how many people was affected by that?
Well, you can see, 100 plus, let's see. About 186. In this column here. About 186, it reflects that. Maybe even more than that, maybe 260. From about grade 10 to about 21.
That took you all the low end.
Yeah, we tried to get everybody to, at least $13.25 an hour.
So, anybody that gets hired from now on to be $13.25?
That's right, that's right, that's the low end.
That's the low end, people.
Right. And that's the bulk of it. Now, the rest, the rest, you know, between police and fire. To be competitive, we did, we were creative in a lot, a lot of things. So, if you look at, at the numbers, between the, uh, hourly rate folks that went bump, got bumped up to $12.50, from $12.50 to $13, 186. And then, uh, when you say police and fire, and that's, you know, that's another couple of hundred. Basically, the people who got, you know, in the 4% range, you know, you're talking about, 30 something, actually 40, when you count you and me and, uh, some of the other folks. So, the majority of them, majority of people here, uh, were looking from 5.5 to, uh, 6.5%.
I think Mr. Glavine has a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, on, on this sheet right here, there's, the percentages at the top.
Right.
And, uh, in the column, there is no percent.
Yeah, they got no raise.
There's no raise for those...
Right, so 48 people, like, 48% of the people.
I got you.
Planning Commission members, us, you.
Yep.
Okay, and directors, you know? So, that's 48 people that are not gonna be bumped out of the total of 611. That's inclusive of Planning Commission and those other, you know, paid members. Okay, this, you know, can go up or down or whatever, but basically, in our calculations, which we've been feverishly trying to get, we'll ask probably for a million seven to add to the budget to accomplish these, this table of increases. All right, but part of this amendment, that I want to be very clear, is one big thing in this, in this amendment is... Is that, you know, uh, based on the PERS structure, each employee accrues about 18 days of vacation a year. There's about 6.5 accrue if you work, 6.5 days of, uh, sick leave. And there's another probably 12 days of vaca, of, uh, paid holidays. Now, most of these... Y'all correct me if I'm wrong, HR and, and it... You know, most of these figures, annualizations of, uh, of an hourly rate are based on 2,080 hours of work per year. Say amen, is that not right? Okay, all right. Well, and that's reasonable. You would want, in business, you'd need about 2,000 hours worth of work a year. But as it sits right now, based on the state law, uh, you know, you're only working 1,700 hours a year if you take your vacation and, and have your sick leave. One of the big things I'm asking in this, in this amendment is that accrue of leave, both sick leave and annual leave, are based on hours worked, not hours paid. Everybody understand that? And that's, that's pretty significant. Another part of it, and I think we've been using one day. If you're out for two or three days, right now, you would be burning one day of your, or eight hours of your annual leave. And we're, based on the, you know, conditions and things, we say, we would ask that to be two days, and then going to the third and the fourth and the fifth day of annual, of the 6.5 days of annual leave that you would have, and then get a doctor's excuse. You know, basically, we want people to, to work and be competitive in, you know, what they make while they're working. So, these are the two things that I'm asking, uh, out of this amendment, is to, you know, correct those things. And then, you know, we'll, uh, develop a, a schedule, a compensation schedule that will position us in the future, whether there's steps or percentages or whenever, that should we have another good year like we had? We'll be able to, you know, logically, uh, apply, uh, raises to everyone in a more reasonable way.
Did I, did I understand you, Mr. Mayor, earlier? I think you were speaking with Mr. Lawrence, that the minimum starting hourly rate is...
Full-time employees, I think. Jill, the $13.20, it was $12.50, now we stepped, we're stepping it up to $13.25.
Was.
Was. Yeah, then we stepping further even at the $13.25.
So, what is the starting rate now for folks? If I'm hired to work for the city of Biloxi tomorrow, at the bottom of the compensation schedule? Am I making...
It's still $12.50, it's a paid grade 10. Is that not right? You know, why don't y'all come up closer here?
Okay, so, so $12.50 is the minimum, that's what I understand, okay.
I'm gonna say one thing and then pipe, and then shut down. But, uh, I've got a piece of document here in my hands, which tells me the, the real story of why we're here today. For three weeks now, three meetings, I've told you, we had 90 vacancies. We still have 90 vacancies. A greatest number of those vacancies are in the police department. We're, we're fast approaching the point that Chief Miller is gonna be answering the phone at dispatch pretty soon. I, I say that in jest, but we've got real, real problems. And the second largest group that, that is vacant are the low-end people the mayor was just talking to, we're trying to raise the minimum wage for.
Lower grades.
The, the lower, the lower grades, that, that we've got tremendous churn, uh, at, at the low end, where people are just leaving faster than we can train them. But we serious, we've got a serious problem here, and it's, we've gotta deal with it pretty, pretty quickly.
And, and you know, it's twofold. We want to be, we want to take care of our employees, they make us money. We want people to come to work and want to come to work and, and feel certain that if we do good, if the city does good, that they'll get fairly, uh, considered for, for another raise. Should we say, hey, okay, we can take a million and spread it, or we can take $750 and... But at least we'll have some mechanism to move that forward. The structure is, is my concern. You know, I know how long I had to work to get 15 days of vacation. Well, you get 18 days of vacation here after the first year. You accrue a day and a half. It seems strong, but that's part of the state law, is that not right, Jill? Right, you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's what we're asking. We want, I think it's within our deal, you know, within our rights to say, uh, and it's only reasonable, you'll accrue these things even 18 days a year. But you can't go take 18 days of vacation and accrue another day of vacation while you're on vacation. Okay? So, that's part of this amendment.
Question on, uh, you got the police to file on this, you're talking about the low-end people. What about the people in Public Works and all the other departments? Where we listed...
Well, they're in this table, everybody's touched. And, and you, by grade, you're gonna see. Unless you're one of these ones that are not gonna be... Everybody in each one of these departments, all 611 minus the 48, are gonna experience what we feel is a reasonable, uh, increase, based on what we are able to do. You know, we uplifted, we put two more million, actually, we added 15 more people, even though 10 of them are vacant right now. But that's in the budget. We're uplifting that even more, to be competitive and to be where we need to be. You know, everybody's talking about not being able to get help, and, uh, but I think, coupled with the moves we made with hospitalization, and what we actually, uh, did with Maestro, and the ability to save, hopefully, $6 or $700,000, it's all coming out of the same bucket, the bucket that this money's coming out of. So, how do we afford this? You know, it's, it's a combination of even, you know, when we work into, you know, I guess, the health, you know, initiatives, we hope that'll even, you know, be part of this 1.7 or 1.8 million that we're gonna ask for you to put into the budget, you know, for January. And that's, that's it, as far as, uh, what we've been doing is figuring out how much, what's the biggest thing we can do for our employees, and then position us to keep people wanting to come work for the city of Biloxi. You know, we, uh, we talked about, uh, keeping grandfathering in the increases that we've experienced with regard to hospitalization. We kept all employees 50 for single and 100... No, 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 for existing employees, we kept them at 50 and 100, right? Okay, but 50 is the bottom line. And we were talking about going to 65 for new employees, that's what I'm trying to say. Still four tiers, you have some options, but not gonna cost you any more than it did before. All right, but for new employees, that will, and we turn over about 15%, maybe, you know, anywhere from 12 to 15% per year. So, we'll, you know, we collect about $597,000 of that insurance from our employees. Basically, we're gonna be asking new employees to be at the, the newer rates, at 65 until 195, is that right? What's the total of the new one? So, that will turn over in five years, I think. So, everybody will be at the same rates. And we're asking also, part of that rate that we kept, people owe $1,000 deductible, right? $1,000, the new one will be at $1,500, I think. So, you know, the new employees will go to a, uh, $1,500 deductible, and that should...
You said something about 611 employees, is that full... That full-time employees in the city of Biloxi, is that everybody, or that just the ones that getting a raise? You know, a lot of those are not, we're not changing there, the pay. The Planning Commission, the council, there's certain ones we're not changing the pay scale. Right. 48 of... Well, that's what I'm trying to get straight, so you have 611, 48 of those are not being changed. Okay.
What other questions might the council have?
Yeah, I was looking at this, the, the fire department versus the police department. And in the past, we've always had that, the, the same.
It's about the same now.
Um, I see a difference in it with the assistant chief and the, uh, the two assistant chiefs. Then we can, when we go down to the, um, the third level, the third tier, the fire department guy makes more than the, uh, police department guy. When it, when it used, the, the last one I looked at, they were the same. And I think, um, in fairness, I think I can't put one safety department over, over the other.
I think you're looking at, look in the gray area, okay? There's, there's some shaded gray, some of the cells there. From patrol, it's got first, second, and third class. Third class being the lower, $38,546. Firefighter three, or firefighter, uh, one is $38,184. Right? A few hundred dollars difference. You see patrol, and there are three of those patrol officers, third class. And there are 12 of firefighter one. You with me?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm kinda with you, but, you know, um, when I looked at the last scale, and then I look at this new scale, uh, it didn't quite balance out right. I mean, it's not, when they were equivalent, they were, they were equal. Now, there's a, a difference in them, especially as far as pay and...
This is the base, the base play, base pay, entry level.
Yeah.
And step one, so to speak.
Yeah, and I think they should be the same. They should, there's no...
Well, there, there, let me, let me say this, and do this computation, and, and we're up to making things equal and, 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 I guess, equitable between the two. Fire depart, firefighter has a, a built-in, uh, of their hours that they work on a normal schedule, I think 16 hours per pay period of overtime, is that not right? 12 hours of overtime, so 12 times 26, that's how many overtime hours that are built in. So, there may be, some explanation may need, you know, may needed to, to be, uh, presented to figure out what's the right thing to do.
Is that, that overtime's not reflective?
Not in this space, that's right. Exactly. So, if you look at the annual take-home, they work more hours, okay? You know, they'll be working more hours.
Right, there's a $4,500 difference, right.
Right.
I'd like to, I'd like to point out one little glitch in this chart. I want, if you haven't picked up on it yet, look under, under the 125 group. Notice at the top, there's no percent. It should be 5.5.
What are you talking about?
So, Mike, just to be sure, I understand, on this top sheet?
Right. That, it's, that's 125 of the people who get paid overtime. Those are, that's what we, we're trying to point out.
But, okay, so between the 5.5% and the 5.75%, there's no heading, and that's 125 folks who get scheduled overtime?
For overtime.
Is that what that is?
Maybe increased 5.5 also.
They would get, okay, yeah.
So, that's a, a difference there.
It just didn't carry over from the old spreadsheet, that's all.
Got you, so that, that should be 5.5% there as well for those 125 folks, all of whom receive overtime?
12 hours overtime every, every two weeks.
So, I, so I have, I have a question, and probably Ms. Thornton or Ms. Paul, Paul could answer this. If I'm a new firefighter, I know what the salary schedule says, but they have budgeted overtime because they work more hours than typical employees. So, basically, if I'm a firefighter, my first year in Biloxi, what am I gonna earn that first year gross?
You're gonna earn about $3,000 overtime per, per, per year, to your gross, your base pay.
I'm just trying to get an idea, because when you look at the salary schedule, that's just your regular pay, it doesn't include overtime. I don't know how much that gets you, but I'm, but I'm curious, because the true figure would be, hey, this is what I made, I came to work every day, and this is what I made, and it's gonna be a few grand more than what's on the, the salary sk, the compensation schedule.
So, a, a new firefighter comes in, if he's working eight hours, which we keep him on eight hours for a good four months, say, five months, where we can get him trained up, might be a little less, all depending on our availability for training up at the State Fire Academy. Once they get on shift, yes, they will earn the 12 hours of overtime per pay period if they make all their shifts, which they should.
It's not per pay period.
Per 27 days?
27 days.
Right. Right, right.
So, 12 times 20, yeah.
I'm sorry, can you explain that for us? Because that was gibberish to me.
If they worked every 12-hour shift additional, in a pay, in a year, they would get approximately $1,800 a year. Because they only get it... Fire department work on a 27-day period, okay? So, their overtime is not calculated until after that 27 days. So, if anything over 204 hours is considered time and a half. So, that's really, in a month, there's 28 days. Actually, it hits every other pay period.
22, 7, 5, 7, 5, 4. 27, 5, 4 is, instead of 2,080, that's how many hours they're gonna work.
Okay, so, so, I, I just wanted to get a feel, not exactly, what you, what I'm hearing is, add a couple of thousand to that roughly, or a little less than what's...
For basic firefighting.
What's on the compensation schedule? Councilman, I think there's another factor that really needs to be said. Let me ask these two gentlemen. Chief Miller, how many vacancies do you have today?
Counting dispatch, I guess, about 30.
Chief Geiser, how many vacancies do you have?
Two.
The, the, one of the trends that we're seeing, and you're seeing this nationally, is we're struggling to recruit and retain police officers.
But that's a, that's a national problem, I mean, not only... It's not just a citizen problem, but what we're talking about here at hand is we're talking about, from a salary standpoint, we're talking about the salaries. So, what I would like to know from a salary standpoint is, she gave us the, the scenario of a firefighter, what is that compared to our police officers?
Well...
Base, base salary?
Base salary, I mean, that's, exactly, that's based on the, the number in these tables.
So, they're different.
Firefighter, uh, three, two, and one, or, uh, officer three, two, and one, comes from a $38,000 and a few, uh, 200 or so, to 49,4.
Mr. Mayor, can I, may I jump in?
Sure.
So, when I look at the numbers, I see for a firefighter one, I see $38,184. And for a, a police officer, third class, which I'm assuming is comparable to a firefighter one, I see $38,546. So, the police officer on this page makes about 400 more at entry level. However, the firefighter gets the added overtime, so the, and if you talk about, you said a couple, maybe a couple thousand a year? That puts the firefighter's salary considerably higher than the, than the officer, the, the police officers. So, I think that's something that we should address. If we're attempting to draw in, if I was, if I was a young man, I'd join the fire department.
Well...
Hands down, more money.
Well, we did a little bit of that computation...
Geiser, people.
That if we, in doing that, we uplifted the, you know, again, the patrolman, and 6.5% versus 5.75. So, that, we took a little bit of that, that sort of logic into consideration.
We, we've got the best fire department in the state and the best police department in the state, and you know, you know that.
I know that.
One of, one of, one of the differences right now is we're having a hell of a time hanging on to our police department.
Well, I, I get that, and so, the first, the first consideration any employee makes for a job is money, right? And so, we look at those pay scales, and regardless of the 5.5 or the 6%, I could care less about those numbers if it doesn't translate to more money in my pocket at the end of the day, the end of the week, or the end of the year. Right, so how do we, how do we, how do we correct that inequity? And I, I do think it's an equitable distribution of, of money that we have to strive to achieve between these two departments, because you're vying for the same type of, of applicant, and you're gonna continue to draw them into the fire department if they're earning more pay.
But they're working more, too, more hours, too. Now, you know, PD will work overtime hours, too. So, I mean, to barely, you can, uh, if you're, you're gonna be expected to put some overtime hours. So, you're, you take home, you know, pay for 2,200 hours would be, you know, sort of make up that dollar difference over the annual deal. But basically, we're building in some overtime in, in the fire department, where we're just getting a time, a time and a half in patrolling, patrolling officers.
There's nothing, nothing is, is scheduled in advance in the police department. If it's overtime hours, you just, they pop up and you work them.
Right.
And I, I get that.
Every year during the budget time, y'all are cranking down on both of their overtimes.
No, we, they plan overtime, they gotta plan overtime.
I'm just saying, up here, every year, with the budget, y'all are cranking down... I'm just saying, up here, every year, with the budget, y'all are cranking down on them for their overtime. So then, they're losing overtime.
Well, what we do during the budget time, and what Ms. Newman is referring to, is we, we discuss that, and we talk about, is it worth more for us to add more overtime hours versus hire another fire, or hire another police officer, right? We have that conversation every single budget session. And, and I think that the resolution is to man the, the police station, and the way to do that is to increase the salary to something that's adequate. I, I just think that, I, I agree with, with Mr. Guines and with Ms. Newman, that if we don't put it on paper and make it look more attractive, we're going to continue to have thirty vacancies in the police department.
Yeah, well, in looking at comparison to other folks, and their strings and whistles with regard to comparison of Ocean Springs, DeAbreville, and Gulfport, and we're as strong as any of them. We're chiefs, tell me, we're, you know, with one hundred dollars or so, each one of the comparable letters, those in one, two, and three, first, second, and third class.
That's right.
We are strong, and, you know, that's what we want to do. We want to remain strong and increase, you know, for what they risk every day in the job, we want them to be compensated and be appreciated. And I think this was reflective. So we, you know, we're pretty aggressive from five-and-a-half to six-and-a-half percent for, for those departments, and then up even higher, six-and-a-half percent on a lot of jobs that went from eleven-something to thirteen-twenty-five. So this is reflective of a couple more million dollars inclusive of overtime and the, and the vacancies to, to give this to our employees, yeah.
So Mr. Mayor, respectfully, and I'll conclude my comments with this. I am, look, we are the strongest, I'm one coast, but I'm always Biloxi first, right? So my concern is, is when we talk about our thirty vacancies, how do we rate, chief, you may know this, how do we rate amongst the other fire departments when it comes to vacancies? And two, you said we're losing, we're hemorrhaging employees, we're getting, we're losing them faster than we can train them. Is that the case in the fire department as well, I mean, in the police department as well? If I said fire department, I meant police department. Chief Miller, so I don't know if you can answer that first question, how do we, when he says we're the strongest, does that translate to vacancies? Are the other cities as, as unemployed as our police department is?
Yeah, well, you're looking at a national problem, so yeah, everybody's experiencing it. But we've gone for quite a while being one of the better paid around, and after this past budget year, that kind of, that kind of subsided. We're actually one of the lowest paid around now because of the raises that the other cities got. Very close, but like you said earlier, if there's a young guy and he's coming in, the young people are looking for what the bottom line is. They're not looking for anything else. So entry level, the mayor has, has proposed something there, the entry level will come up, and I think that's, I mean, I think it's a good thing, but that's what we're going to have to do, is you got to be at least comparable or above the other people around you in order to maintain...
Well, chief, in your, in your professional opinion, what the mayor's proposing, these numbers that are on the pieces of paper that we have in front of us, do you think that it's adequate to sustain and increase the amount of officers you have?
I do, I do. With what he's proposed, we looked at it earlier today, with what he's proposed, along with, you still have to look at benefits, along with the benefits package, yes, I think will be more attractive than anybody else around us.
Thank you, nothing else.
Questions at that end?
Go ahead, go ahead, George.
Mr. Lawrence?
Trying to just nail this down, make sure we're doing the right thing to take care of everybody we can, as been our goal, since we started meeting with you and everything, is to try to have a decent pay raise. The low and high end, how's that affect their thing? Where you file...
Amendment and max?
Where you file out in the scale, if you're in a scale now, it adjusts as, how's it affect the guy, say, one of them thirteen or fourteen, then it goes up to fifteen or sixteen? How's it, how they know where they at in that scale? The employees, I'm talking.
They know what grade they're in. The job is in a grade, is that not right, Jill?
Every job is...
Okay, every job is in a grade. And we adjusted the men and the max, and there's, like I said, there are three little items, you know, the lowest was, was line A, step one. The highest was line B, step sixteen. That reflects what's in this amendment, high and low. Based on, if a new employee comes along, and they have enough experience, but they're, you know, in this job, in this grade, we have more flexibility in saying, okay, you're not, you're not coming at the very lowest, but it gives us some flexibility, a way to place them based on their, you know, their experience and their expertise. So the high-low, you know, we're not tied to, you know, stepping them up, we can't step somebody in a job, step sixteen right off the bat, or fifteen. So I think that reflect, is that reflective? Y'all jump in anytime you think you can add something to the conversation, okay?
I guess my question is, somebody's been there, say, twenty years, making forty-two thousand dollars, and then you adjust his pay, he's at a certain scale at forty-two thousand, so he's automatically going to move up to, say, forty-four thousand?
I understand what you're asking.
If you're able to, based on, given what our plan is, you're a little bit more of a less subjective evaluation, you know, more frequent evaluation. So, if you've done, let's say, we're supposed to, everybody's on a two-week, every two weeks you get paid, time-to-time sheet, every two weeks you're supervisor, time-to-time sheet, and says you work these hours, and it'll be part of our base of this, these very intensive, you know, way to get this data consistent, you're going to add a little steps, and you did a good job, or you didn't do a good job, or you didn't do a bad job. Guess what? That will give us a more subjective evaluation for regular schedule.
Okay. You want me to start again? You heard me, George, right? Okay.
My question is, Fofo, is when you change in this scale right now, I know you're talking about...
We're not changing the scale. We're talking about the value... A change in the scale, we're stepping up the employee.
They're not going to get a raise right now?
Yeah, they're not going to get a raise.
That's what they're trying to figure out, where they're going to sit in this scale.
They're going to be within the men and the max.
The grade.
The grade that you're in, you're going to stay in the same grade, and you're, we're just going to uplift your salary based on these percentages, and you're probably, every one of them will stay within the grade that they're in. Isn't that right? We're going to give you a raise. You're going to be not in the midpoint, maybe, you know, maybe a little bit over the midpoint.
The...
But it's not an official, this men and max is not an official step one, or step sixteen, or step thirteen, or step fourteen. And we're, you know, and I told the president, I said, I'm, I'm open to, you know, whether you want to use steps, or percentages, or points within the high and the low, it's okay with me. Basically, the conditions that I would like to see, and so we can fairly go forward with increasing salaries based on performance, and based on, you know, attendance to the job, and good jobs, is, is set up this structure. The structure, the big point of the structure is you accrue time off based on the days you, you work, not the days you get paid. Okay? That's a big thing. Using some annual leave, an additional day of annual leave upon sick days, okay? Two instead of one. And then this evaluation will fairly let each supervisor, and then their supervisors, figure out, I got four-hundred thousand dollars to spread. How is it easy for us to spread at the end of FY22? Okay? So just going to set up a structure that, you know, we could, we'll have a table, okay? You did good, you get a point, or two points, or three points, in the percentages. Again, that's, this is a, a way to position us for three, you know, two, three, and four years down the road.
Important, important to notice that the increases are applied to, on the left-hand column, grades, not to individuals. So somebody that's in grade twenty, there's actually four people in grade twenty, that they're, they're going to get five-point-seven-five percent. It's not Bill and Jean and Jill and Joe that's getting five-point-seven, five-point-seven-five. It's anybody who's in that grade. So the, the grade is increasing, the base of the grade is increasing. And if you happen to be in that grade, you get, you stay along with everybody else that's in that grade.
And that grade's the type of job, too. You know, you populate the grade by the jobs that they're doing, maybe in different departments.
That means the maintenance coordinator, the bail clerk, the office manager, the therapeutic recreational specialist, and the utility crew supervisor will all get point seven-point-five if they're in that grade. Not, and it's not by, by individual, it's by grade.
So the evaluation thing you're setting up is actually going to be for next year.
Right.
If somebody's done a good job...
Well, it's just, it's just...
This is going to affect as it is.
Well, this is, you're going to get this, that's right.
My evaluation would be for a...
In the future.
Twenty-two.
For the future, we'll have some evaluation, not, not just, you know, done, you know, at, when we say, go give me an evaluation, everybody. You'll be evaluated your performance, whether you were satisfactory, or you exceeded, you know, you exceeded expectations, or you didn't do a good job. So it gives us a, you know, a definable way to reward the people who do good jobs, and to kind of say, man, you got to step it up. But a way to, you know, to increase our productivity and be fair to everybody. Some people work very, very hard, and it's, it's, you know, it should be noted, you know, you did more, you know, you did more than I expected you to do, that's a good, good job. So you do that thirteen times a year, that's pretty good.
When I first heard this scheme of the mayor's, I thought he'd lost his mind, because it would have been a lot easier just to do a flat increase across, as a lot of the other cities have done. But the more I looked at the vacancies and the, the difficulty we're having to retain people, the more, this seemed like a more business-like approach. Pay, spending the money where we have the need.
And like you said, George, that's, this is going to happen. What's going to happen in the future is a way to evaluate for future raises. Everybody understand that? I mean, it's, it's just a more of a clinical evaluation based on the week, you know, work you did in the last pay period.
Yeah.
Who have the next year? All right, good.
I think Ms. Newman had a question.
Yeah, I was wondering, is there an option that we can give each employee, that they have a starting pay plus benefits, or they choose a higher starting pay and no benefits? Because I know the youngins rather get more per hour or salary-wise, and they don't care about the benefits, and perhaps we could attract some younger folks that way.
That's, that's a question, you know, from a legal standpoint. Hey, I can, you know, it costs us, if you're a single employee, fifty-seven-hundred dollars a month, a year, right? That's what that's worth. That's what we budget. We don't necessarily pay that.
Because they're...
Okay? So we're kind of hamstrung. Now, if you're a family, you know, if you're, you know, have a family, more than two people into the system, that evaluation is twelve-thousand-eight-hundred dollars a year, okay? Another part of a benefit, now, and this is where PERS comes in, every hundred dollars we pay you, we also pay seventeen-point-four dollars to PERS. Those are benefits are kind of difficult to unhook. You know, we can make each person a contract employee just come up with a rate, which would probably be, instead of thirteen dollars, probably be sixteen or seventeen dollars. But the, the part of that deal, I pay you when you work. Okay? I don't pay you for vacations or holidays. I mean, there's a way to do it. But, you know, and there may be a handful of employees that might want to do that, but I think they realize the benefit of what this is, you know? I mean, you know, the, the benefits are, can be dollarized, for sure.
Dixie, you're, you're right about the young people. They'd rather not have benefits and just have a little more cash, but we sort of have a moral obligation to be sure that our employees have, can, are healthy and, and have some kind of benefit. Now, you can, we can rack and stack, there's benefits where there's a catastrophic number that's on a small end, and a better, more of a family plan, and that's what we were kind of trying to do in the budget. But I, I don't think it would be morally right for us to just allow people not to have any insurance.
But they could have options every year. So the first year, they're like, ah, that, yeah, you know what, perhaps that's a bad idea, so then, the community learns.
That would drive them a little bit crazy than they already are, right, these two, right? And Jody, too, of course.
Any other questions, Ms. Newman?
But it's doable.
Okay. Mr. Barrett, and then I'll get to you, Mr. Guines.
Okay, I have a few questions and a couple of comments. I'd like to start by saying, this is something we've discussed for the last five years, and so I applaud the council, the administration, for making this happen for our employees. I think it's overdue, and so even if we don't all agree at the end of the day, I think it's great that we're giving all of our employees a raise, and so, number one, the forty-eight people who are not getting a raise, I see on this schedule that level thirty-three, level thirty-four, level thirty-five, level thirty-nine is not listed.
Nobody in that grade.
So there's no, there's nobody currently employed that holds those level pay grades? Well, on this sheet, there is. You have number thirty-three's a consultant, number thirty-four's assistant project manager, thirty-five is an engineer two, thirty-nine is engineer three. So we don't have anyone employed in, in those levels, is what...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So outside of the council, the planning commission, and I suppose the clerks, yourself, Mr. Leonard, who else is encompassing that forty-eight people who aren't getting a raise?
The director.
The directors, so that's what...
Nine.
Yeah, that, so that's like five people, but outside, so outside of that, there's no one else?
Well, you get the part-time people.
All right. Now, my second question is, let's take, I guess, like, level twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, I was looking at, just so I understand it better, let's, you have, level twenty-five, you have a low of forty-thousand-eight-something, high of fifty-nine, zero, nine, five. So level twenty-five pay grade will be getting five-and-a-half percent. So wherever they currently set on that spectrum, they will be increased by five-and-a-half percent.
That's right, exactly.
Okay, and I know that...
Not, not increasing base, it's actually...
It's increased by where they currently set on that pay scale.
In that, in that range.
Now, my next question, and I think George sort of asked this, is what determines between that forty-thousand-eight-hundred and fifty-nine thousand? What determines where they set on that pay scale?
Well, let me say this about the, the current compensation, or the one we're in right now. There was probably a forty percent spread of just raw dollars, you know? There are a number of, if you look at some of the grades in the existing compensation, there are a number of one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar jobs within the existing situation. Nobody's making that, but it's usually, the bottom to the top is about a forty percent, thirty-seven to thirty-eight to forty percent difference, sometimes forty-two percent from low to high. That seems a big spread, seem like you need to be, you know, reclassifying jobs. But this is just an effort to, to give me a min-max, like some of these others.
So, so again, who determines where they set on that spread?
What happens if you...
Let's just take that, I'm, I'm looking at twenty-five right...
I'll find the history of the compensation schedule for you to understand how...
The A, Bs, and, A, B, and C parts of that.
Years ago, they did across-the-board raises before...
Could you pull the mic closer to you? We don't want to miss this at home.
You're not going to understand it anyway. No offense, it's hard for me to understand some days. At one point, the compensation schedule did have integrity, meaning between each step it was two-and-a-half percent, between each grade it was five percent. And then after Hurricane Katrina, they decided, the council decided, well, how much would it cost to give everybody a raise? And let's say they came up with a half-million dollars, I don't know. Instead of saying everybody gets a three percent increase, they said, okay, we're going to take that dollar amount, divide it by the employees, and everybody's going to get four-thousand-three-hundred, or four-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-three dollars. Of course, I'm back here saying, no, 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 we can't do that. We can't do that, because that'll screw up my compensation schedule.
And so that's why we're here.
They said, yes, we're going to do that. And I said, well, the only thing I can do is plug that amount into each step.
Okay.
So that, right there, we lost the integrity of the compensation schedule. It no longer had two-and-a-half percent between each step, it no longer had five percent between each step, between each grade.
Okay.
Then, another raise comes along, oh, we're not finished.
So the same thing happened multiple times?
No, had a sixteen-hundred-dollar raise. Then, we decided one year, we're going to do, depending on how many years we're here, a three percent, a four percent, or a five percent, minimum of a thousand dollars. Well, how do you do that? Well, girl got smart, and she figured it out.
Okay. I understand.
Now, we've had, we've had some heated conversations.
Oh, yes, we have.
About this. About this. So we're gonna do some...
And Mr. Lawrence has both witnessed it.
Okay.
But this is a, you know, I think a reasonable way to say a job is worth this from the high to low.
All cities have gone away from this type of compensation schedule.
I get it, I understand. I just wanted to know how that was determined.
What happened, years ago, they would say, oh, okay, we're gonna give a three percent increase, and employee will each go up one step, and I'll adjust the compensation schedule a half a percent. Or we'll give a five percent, every, every employee will go up two steps. That's how employees got to go up to steps. Or if we hired someone...
Well, speaking HR right now, okay? I'm gonna tell you an example of, in the PD in DeAbreville. How would you handle this, my dear? One, one thousand dollars each, two times a year, for a PD? How are you gonna do that? You know? That's, and, and so, anyway, it's a difficult thing to, to figure this out, and how it steps, because that's the whole idea, is to give some reasonable dollarization of a step between here and there, in that, you know, if everything goes well, we're gonna give, we're gonna step up everybody one or two.
Right.
So this is, this gives us some, you know, a more reasonable ability to address the future.
Hey, we wanna give everybody a thousand dollar raise. Not a problem. It'll work. I wanna give everybody two percent. I wanna give, just like he's requested, you know, suggested this year, this, from this grade to this grade, six percent this grade. That way, it's doable.
Okay.
And that's why those cities...
I understand, I just didn't, I, I just wanted to know how it was determined where someone set on that scale. Okay, my next question is, if we go down to the bottom level of pay, you said we, our lowest position was ten ninety-two an hour. Starting October first, we raised that to twelve fifty. So if someone was already in the system, October first, they got essentially a six percent raise, let's just say to twelve fifty, I, I don't know, somewhere around that.
Gonna get an additional...
And, and they're gonna get six percent again. So if they were already in the system, October first, these people are actually getting a twelve percent raise.
That's right. And it was sixty of those people who hit that condition. Sixty.
If they were already in the system, starting October first, they, they...
They went...
In all, for...
They went to twelve, they went to twelve, twenty-six thousand, there was, they went from twenty-four thousand, twenty-three thousand, twenty-seven...
They have a lot at ten ninety-two, I don't even know if it's anybody...
No. But there were...
But some of those people's getting a ten, twelve, thirteen percent raise, basically.
That's exactly right.
From where they, so that makes us more competitive on the bottom end, or stronger in our cities.
And it was, there were sixty of those people that were uplifted in the FLY twenty-two budget that went to that, and we...
So basically, it makes us easier, it makes it easier for us to go and draw people in, in public works, and grounds, things like that, that, that we were struggling to keep, or we were losing to other cities.
In your, in your workshop, you had, you uplifted those to twenty-six thousand dollars. In, in this now, we're uplifting those people to twenty-seven, one fifty, or something like that.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna switch gears. So I understand the concept in the police and fire department on the, the people that are working hourly, the, the firefighters, and patrolmen, whatever. What about the people, or I guess my statement is, the people who come in at the fire department that are working Monday through Friday, nine to five, eight to five, or whatever? I understand the concept of the, the, the guys who are making an extra two or three grand a year, because they're working that twelve hours every twenty-seven days overtime. And they're actually, at the end of the month, they're actually making more, even though it's not saying it on paper, than the same level police officer. But what about, my, my, my belief is, the people that are in the fire department, and the people that are in the police department that come in Monday through Friday, that are on the same level, I think that those levels should be equal. I don't think that, I don't think that...
Okay. The difference is, right now, those people that you're talking about, non-s sworn, in the trench firefighters or policemen, in the, in the, in the fire department's five point five percent, in the, uh, police department's a six percent.
Okay. I think that those, my, just my statement, my belief, I, my stance is, I believe that those levels should be equal. Now, moving on, I have questions about the sick leave. So currently, if, if I'm, I'm an employee, and I come down with strep throat, I have to take a day of my vacation time before I'm allowed to take a day of sick leave.
If you're out three days, you'll use one day vacation and two days of sick leave.
So if I'm out three days, under the new proposal, I have to use two days vacation and one day sick leave.
That's right.
Now, let me ask you this. Let's say I'm in the fire department, and I, and so, we get six days sick leave a year.
You accrue six days sick leave, six point five, is that right?
Point five hours.
Per pay...
Which is nine point seven five.
Yeah, excuse me.
So nine point seven five days per year. And we get how many days vacation per year?
Eighteen.
Eighteen days vacation.
What is it after five years?
So let's just...
Twenty-one? Twenty-one's the next step?
No.
What? No, it's not the highest, it's a, it's a bottom line.
Okay, that's, that's fine, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just, so hypothetically, I'm, I'm a firefighter, and I, I, I don't know how the process works, but I go to Nick and I say, hey, my family wants to go on a twelve-day What is the process of a firefighter being able to go on vacation? Because I know that if three people ask to go on vacation, that puts you in a position...
That's a logistic problem, yeah, try, exactly.
And so, vacations are turned down because of that. So these guys are forced to take six days to go on vacation. Is that, is that correct?
So the way it works out is, we pick our vacations, in fact, we just did it in November for the, for the future, for January one to December thirty-first. You can pick upwards of five shifts, which equals about two weeks. That's for everybody, you know, battalion chief and below. Now, we do it different in the office, but there aren't many of us. Once they've got that set, that's pretty much it. Now, the lower ranks, or newer, newer people, we do it by seniority. So your guys that have been there for thirty years get Christmas, and New Year's, and all that sort of stuff. Other than that, yes.
Use annual leave.
Correct, yeah. Typically, you know, the way we're staffed right now, and, and manning the trucks, we don't, we don't use annual leave. The only time we use annual leave is if we have vacation scheduled. Other than that, we either, you know, a guy, he's got a sick, he's sick. If not, we do have a swap time policy where you can trade out a, a man for a man.
Okay. All right. All right, that's all I have.
Mr. Gans, go ahead, and I have a question.
I figured you'd get around to me eventually. I'm looking at, the, the, the starting pay was one ninety-two, and we're bringing it up to twelve fifty, correct?
It was ten ninety-two.
Ten ninety-two to twelve fifty.
It is twelve fifty presently.
It is twelve fifty presently.
As of October first.
As of October first, it's twelve fifty. And I think a while back, I, I was talking about even bringing it up a little bit higher than that.
Well, Councilman Gans, let me step in right now. If you're an employee right now that was raised, you're gonna be raising to thirteen twenty-five. If you're employed right now, that twenty-seven, twenty-six thousand dollars, we just, you know, uh, uh, just got a bump up to twenty-six thousand, bumped it even further to twenty-seven one twenty. That's thirteen twenty-five an hour. There was sixty people that, that happened.
You mean with the six percent increase on top of it?
On top of what you got when you went from ten ninety-two, eleven twenty-five to twelve fifty? Now, you're gonna get another to make it thirteen twenty-five an hour?
Yeah, okay. And I was looking at, you know, of course, we got it, we got it rated down from GR ten to GR eighteen, which is your bottom tier workers. And those workers are the ones who, like I said, the loaf of bread costs all of us the same thing as it costs them. So I have no problem with the six percent raise with them. But then, looking at, when you go further down, you know, what I would like to see is, there are some who probably has had some raises, and that, and, you know, and like I said, I would rather see the ones who haven't had a raise since two thousand sixteen. We need to look at the ones who haven't had a raise.
This is everybody...
Since two thousand sixteen.
Whether they had a raise or not, this is everybody. And they're all gonna get these percentages.
Yeah, but what about the people who had raises with, in between that?
They're still gonna get the, these are percentages.
They're still gonna raise, which is not fair to our, our, our people who are cutting the grass, digging ditches, and, and, you know, and like I said, they're the ones who's suffering the most. So that's where, where my biggest issue is with, with that. You know, like you said, everybody gets a raise, which is, which is fair. But the bottom ones, I, I definitely, they...
The lower grade, don't say bottom, lower grades.
Okay, lower grade, okay, okay, yeah.
You know, are gonna be uplifted, you know, as, as much as we possibly can, and, and as reasonable as we possibly can. It's, you know, if somebody got something, a major part of the deal, whether it's a merit increase or whatever, you call that a raise, or you call that, you know, a, a step up in job? Okay? Or, you know, uh, you know, in sixteen, we did about a five percent of, of most of the places. It's difficult to kinda back out your, you know, pro-rata say of that five percent that you got in sixteen against what you're gonna do in twenty-one. Is that fair? You know, how do we, you know, how do we back that raise out in order to apply this, you know, pro-rata to six percent?
But I, I just wanted to mainly express that, you know, that twelve fifty, you know, I mean, every little bit counts, but, but I still think, you know, it should be a little higher than what it is there.
Well, it is, it's gonna be, it is gonna be thirteen twenty-five. Yeah, it's even lifted more than we did in the October one. So that's gonna get, you know, net more than six percent, it's more like eighteen percent in some cases.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, some people get taken care of twice. Then, then the other thing I have is, I have no problem with the, with the police department, because, you know, they're deserving in everything that they, they are doing, and they have a tough job. And, and of course, like Chief said, going around the country, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a nationwide problem. However, with the fire department, as it's listed and the way I see it now, you know, I can't make heads or tails of it, of, of how it was really figured out. I mean, I, I get that, you, you threw the numbers at me and everything. I still think, if I can't see it, and, and if it don't reflect on the paper, it's gonna be hard to figure out, you know, what's actually going on. And so, you know, maybe someone's gonna have to help me understand that.
And, and I'm happy to do that. And these numbers can be tweaked one way or the other. But basically, how we determined that, we asked both chiefs to put a, a table together. And we looked at, at compensation scales, and we knew where we needed to be. And that, these numbers reflect where we needed to be.
Right.
Give me an amen over here.
But it has to...
And then, uh...
And in my opinion, it has to look like it's, it's on that same level. And right now, I can't see where it's on that same level.
Well, where you, let me ask you, let me ask you something. Where are you confused? At the entry level, or at the normal, you know, midway, or on the top of either...
All, all the above. I, I think I would probably, I guess I would need a tutorial through the whole thing, because, like I said, from the top level, from the assistant chief down, you know, there's a, there's a difference in, in the pay, in, in every area.
Well, we, this, these numbers were generated based on the same conditions that we looked at for Ocean Springs, for Long Beach, for DeAbreville, and for Gufford. And we knew what they were, you know, there was something called a recruit in, in Gufford. And that's a number, it's a, it's a number. Then we got a firefighter, one and two, in, in Gufford. And we got, you know, one, two, and three. And one stays, and the same thing for patrolmen. You stay a, you know, a, a lower end, lower paid situation for about a year, then you bump up to the next, which is a significant jump. It went from, so then, not to look at these, these counts in those categories, and not too many people in the ones, you know, the, the entry levels. Because they, they get stepped up in a year, and that's a significant bump, about five thousand dollars, I think, isn't it? Yeah. So if you work a year, you're gonna get a bump, because you're gonna go automatic from, you know, you know, the third class is the top in patrolmen, different sequence. But anyway, the top, you know, you reach in a, a finite number of years. Versus Gufford's range for that fire, for that policeman, went from thirty-nine thousand to fifty-one thousand. But there's a number of years that it takes to get to fifty-one thousand, is that...
That's right.
That's right.
I mean, it's, you can determine in each one of these cases, when you'll be bumping in X amount of years. Is that fair to say?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I, I still, like I said, I still need to see it reflected on the paper. And that would, that would help me out a whole lot, if it was reflected on paper. And then, a lot of these, I know they're coded in areas, we don't know really what the breakdown is on, you know, GR twenty-seven, GR thirty-two, and all of those, those areas. It makes it a little more, you, um...
Accentuation.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that, that concludes what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gans. I, I have a question. Let's, let's say, I'm picking a position here, pay grade fifteen, animal control officer, dispatcher, deputy court clerk, lifeguard, police desk clerk, public works secretary, and there's probably fifteen different job titles in grade fifteen. And the minimum proposed is thirteen fifty an hour for that pay grade, and the maximum is eighteen fifty-eight per hour. And I'm, I'm thinking, if I'm, let's say, I'm an executive, I'm an executive secretary too, who's been with the city for a number of years, let's suppose that I'm, I'm, I don't think I'm currently making eighteen fifty-eight. But at some point, let's say I'm close to eighteen fifty-eight, let's say I'm seventeen fifty-eight. And then, a, a year or two from now, we get a pay raise, and at that point, I, I go up, I guess, to the maximum rate. Are we going to increase the maximum every year?
Let, let me say this about that, and you correct me if I'm wrong. Based on picking step one in A, and verse, and step sixteen in B, none of them are gonna get, because you're not forty percent away from the top. None of these jobs will top out. Is that correct?
With the raise that we're doing this year, no, nobody's gonna top out. What happens in the future, I can't answer that, because that's all up to you.
I, I understand that, but this goes back to Mr., to somewhat, to Mr. Gans' question, and that is, how many years would it take me to go from the minimum to the maximum? Is it gonna be five years? It's gonna be twelve years?
Wait, 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 that's the whole...
That we can't answer that.
You can't answer that, because we don't know ground conditions or what? But if we have a system, I mean, I'm, this is just...
I, I understand.
If we have a system that year by year, we feel that we have a mechanism to give me a bump. Okay, I wanna spread six hundred thousand dollars across these things, and that, that winds up with a distribution, because we have the record, you know, the highs and lows to, to, to step up. Multiple years is, is where we're thinking about the, the highs and lows. But right now, there's a forty percent spread between, you know, the, the, the minimum and the max. That's a, that's a lot of money.
All right, as an employee, then, I, I have, I would have...
But there's, there's, excuse me, I didn't mean to cut you again. The, uh, you know, there's no real mechanism, I guess, to say, you're gonna get a raise. The mechanism, we wanna be able, if we're affording that, we wanna, you know, have some distribution of meeting expectations, exceeding expectation, and not meeting expectations in a, you know, a, a reasonable way. So you perform, and we wanna, you know, reward our top performers with three percent or two percent. Next year, we have a mechanism to say, these are our top performers, or these are my okay average folks, or these are people really don't, not cutting the grade.
So then, as an employee, I'd have two questions. Number one, when is my next raise coming? And number two, how much is that raise gonna be? Now, what we've done in the past is, we used to know, is, is Jill said earlier, with the, the compensation schedule, we, we could say with integrity, your next raise will be this, this much, so much an hour, whatever. Okay? But we got a, we got away, we got away with, we got away from that, with that two and a half percent increase, when we went with percentages, sometimes flat rates, sometimes variable rates. But, but again, my, my question is, if I wanna have a future here, when's my next raise coming? And, and the honest answer is, we never know, we can't tell you.
We haven't, we haven't...
I'd like to see that addressed. And, and after you're done, I'd like to take a few minutes to just share some things with the council and anybody who's interested. The next, the next thing is, how much will that raise be? We can't tell you. We don't know when your next raise is coming, we don't know how much that raise will be. next raise is coming. We don't know how much that raise will be. And I'm thinking, if I'm looking for a job, I'd like, I'd like to know that. And what concerns me, and I think concerns Mr. Gains to some extent, may concern other council members, is, I see the minimum and the maximum. If I'm hired, if I start work two years from now in Biloxi, do I start at the minimum hourly rate? Or can you put me anywhere you want, particularly if I'm a tech guy and-
Or skilled.
The private, the private sector, you know, it's hard for us to find tech guys, it's hard for us to find firefighters.
Guys, trades too.
That gives, this would give the administration the flex to put you on that compensation schedule anywhere. So we might start Kenny at 1315 an hour, and we might start Paul at 1822 an hour. Even though, even though they may be both equally talented, and they may be doing the same job.
Well, you're maxed out, I'm going to get a raise, you're not.
No, you know, like I said, there are ways to, you know, when you hire folks, you either raise them to the skill level they have. I mean, you know-
But those are concerns I have, and I just want, those are shortcomings, there are shortcomings. There are advantages and disadvantages, and I see some of the disadvantages, I see some of the advantages.
If, if we don't do this, and then we're stuck with what we're doing, and it's even harder to do those things right now.
Well, I understand. We're facing the same challenges that every city is facing right now, trying to get good employees. I don't know if there, Mr. Glavine's got a question. If anybody else has a question, we'll try and wrap this up. And like I said, I'd like about 15 or 20 minutes to share something. We get to Mr. Glavine, Mr. Lawrence, and I'll get to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we've all been kind of trying to figure out what the right thing to do is. And the bottom line, you know, we got 1.7 million dollars, we're increasing our payroll. And with input, like you said, Mayor, from the two chiefs, and from the HR director, and yourself, I think we all realize that the step program and compensation schedule just didn't work. We don't know from year to year if we can, and nobody knows. No business in the environments that we've went through over the last decade, you know, it's hard to determine, you know, what ability that you do have to increase people. But, you know, what we do know today, that we're trying to do the right thing, and compensate, you know, our employees, to attract them to the great city of Biloxi, and that they feel that they're being paid, you know, a wage that is fair. And I think this is a step, if anybody is looking at what we're trying to accomplish, I think they, they may not like it entirely, but they got to say, look, 1.7 million dollar increase in the city's payroll, we're looking at police and fire, and we're looking at these other employees, and we're trying to do the right thing to get them to a fair point. And we're not increasing the council salary, or the mayor's salary, or the director's salary, and others. The leadership is saying, hey, we recognize you guys, and we're trying to do the right thing. So I want to just say that I do applaud the mayor. It is a little bit more clear, a little bit more clarity to the situation today, looking at the data. You know, we've been all talking to the mayor, we probably burned your ear off, trying to, trying to see what, how this was all going to fit today. So I'm encouraged. We took care of some insurance things, and now we're taking care of some salary situations. I do have a little rub, Mayor, I'll just have to say on this, two days or three days that you got to use your sick leave. I think it's been, historically, we've used one day, and there was a purpose to that. So at least the departments would know if somebody's trying to play around with just calling out sick to take days off. And to increase it to two days, I don't know how that's going to sit with our employees. I'm unsure of that component right now. I'm just, I just have to tell you, that's my personal opinion.
I'm happy to explain it to you.
Okay.
But-
I'm just saying, that's one little thing.
Let me, let me add one thing, too. We did increase our wages and salaries, personal services, from FY '21 to FY '22, which we're in right now, $2 million. Personal services increased $2 million by the additional positions that we budgeted. Now, with this step up, we're going to add another 1.7 to it.
Okay. I think Mr. Lawrence had a question.
Yeah, I was going to direct it to the chief of police and firemen. On these numbers we got you down, 25 policemen, you down 23 firemen. How many people have left because of the pay? Are they retiring? Are they just moving on? Do y'all have any idea how many people actually left because of the pay?
Yeah, we've had several that have left and gone to other agencies just recently. We've had a huge number that have retired, which we expected that. We didn't really expect officers to leave us and go to other cities. But we've had quite a few of those, along with some dispatchers have also left. Some not going to other cities, but some just found other jobs that paid more.
And how many have you recruited in all this time?
It's been, well, we've, a handful, really. We've, very difficult to recruit right now. We have two in the, we hired two the other day, we have two more in the pipeline, and we have a test for, I think we're going to be able to test about 20 or something.
Now, Chief, let me ask also, if we go to these numbers, which is your top grade 49, that's going to be very competitive with anybody else. It's going to be hard for them to realize, ground conditions with benefits and those other things, that they would be better off at another agency. And that's the whole idea, why we address both PD and fire department, to make sure that their position where money is not going to be the driving issue.
That's right. We're going to be very competitive now with these new numbers.
The insurance program that we have is a rich program, that don't seem to affect them. They leave because of that? Or they, I know y'all were looking for more money. When you're talking about 12, 14 thousand dollars a year in insurance, that you're not paying for, that's got to play pretty good into something.
And hope.
Yeah, I haven't seen anybody leave because of the insurance, if that's what you were asking. I haven't seen that. Most of them are leaving because of the bottom line, and actual pay.
And if they go somewhere else, they have to pay 600 dollars a month in insurance. That's 7200 a year. Somebody, I don't know if they're getting that much more money, changing. That's what I'm trying to find out.
And again, I think that's what Councilman Newman was saying. You got to dollarize those benefits, and figure out, and let them realize, this is a real, you know, you go to another place, you're going to be paying, you know, additional dollars off that paycheck you take home. That's a real consideration. It's up to us to say, think about it. Y'all need to think about it, what you're going to be bringing home, basis of what you're, and what the number is, you're going to be, you know, hired into another place with.
When you think you have a family, that's the insurance, 15,000 a year minimum. That's a ton of money.
And you pay 1200 a year.
That's what one guy said he was leaving. I said, you got 15,000 by insurance, then you better leave. Well, I can't do that right, because you only have 15,000 extra money to do that.
Well, as we recruit, now, as we, you know, explain the benefits, the compensation that you get, it's not just all dollars in that base.
I wonder if the firemen had the longevity, did that play anything into-
You didn't touch longevity.
I'm asking him. The longevity, what the firemen have, does that play into effect that they're gaining this 15 dollars a month, whatever it might be?
As far as the longevity, is it playing into our retirements? Is that, is that what you're asking?
How does it play into people staying or leaving? This is all what it's all about. We're trying to retain, retain our employees.
Those firemen are leaving because of retirement. We have very few leaving-
Yeah, we have very few firemen leaving for other, other cities where we do lose them. Every so often, it's to Mobile or St. Tammany Parish, they've got a better retirement system. And that's nothing we can affect. We'd have to go up to the legislature to affect that. The 30-year system really kills both, both police and fire. You know, 25 is tolerable, but Mobile and St. Tammany, who are 45-minute drives, are 20-year. Out of 50%, you're looking at 25 years to get to 50, and they got a state of 30. And as far as our recruitment, we don't see the laterals coming from other departments anymore. 10, 15 years ago, we could hire anywhere between five to 12 people from other departments, which saves us in training, they go straight to the trucks. You know, we don't have, a lot of times, they're EMT certified. Now, I think we've got about 55 applications that we're going to be testing these people next week, and one is a lateral. We used to see double that, and we used to see about 150 applications. So it's, it's a problem, I think, everywhere you turn.
Let me ask, you think these numbers will be-
I think it's going to help. I think that will pull, I think the, keeping the insurance low, and bumping up the salaries will entice ones to come from, you know, neighboring cities, your DeIberville's, your Gulfports, Moss Point's, Pascagoula's. You know, it's going to put us a little bit more competitive.
Okay, thanks.
Going back to what Jill said, in the back, that was 2009, we raised at 4592. We were so low, so bad, we had to do something. That's Katrina. And then in a couple of years, we did another 1600. I mean, that was just up to keep all the employees. Back, we roughed it out to 4600. But that was just, we had to have people working and staying here. I know Jill was here, the chiefs and them was here, but the rest of y'all hadn't been there when we did that 6200, pretty much. So it saved a lot of help back then, bumped up the salaries then. Same thing you're trying to do now, which is a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I think Mr. Deming has a question or two.
I'm sorry, I'm receiving text messages regarding the same topic, so I had to step out and get a bit of understanding for some of the questions that I've been asked. A lot of them, and I would say nine of the 10, were about the two days of annual pay being used in lieu of sick days. That's probably the number one concern that I've heard coming up to today, and within these messages that I've received. If, I'm going to give you a moment to explain, and then we'll, we'll open up a dialogue. If you can really give me a more in-depth understanding of what you're trying to accomplish with it, because what they're more concerned with is losing their annual pay when they're genuinely sick, or having to spend $100 to go see a doctor, just to qualify for some other type of plan that we would have to pay sick pay, or just stay out four days, so then they can get two days of sick pay and two days of annual leave pay. And now we're disincentivizing the labor that we're trying to acquire by, by bringing in more people, right? I mean, it really is a point of diminishing returns, when we're trying to save money, but it ends with costing the city, because we're incentivizing that they stay out longer.
Well, you know, I can address that. You know, coming from business, you're coming from things that we did before, I can tell you, 18 days a year is a lot to be off. Okay? You know, you talk about scheduling. You know, normally, you work 11, 10 years at English, you're going to get 15 days of vacation. After 10 years, you get 18 days right off the top. Again, we need people to work. And that was part of the, you know, the give and take. The amount of money we're going to give, we need production. When you can only get 1700 hours worth of work, and you would be amazed if you did the dollarization of the hours worked for the benefits that would be, or paid, I don't think it's unreasonable. But, you know, you're, this is my draft of what we're asking. You know, it was more reasonable when it was explained to me, back when I became mayor, because I was really, you know, trying to put it together. You know, I could see 18 days of work if you work five years. But this is, you know, five months, you're going to start accruing. I need people to work.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think that the amount of accrued days off is going to change, because we are no longer accruing hours if you're on annual leave, or if you're on sick days, right? You're only accruing leave for hours that actually worked, which will reduce that number naturally.
I am.
Okay, fair enough. So I'm going to request that you update the proposal to one day. And if it comes to the paper, we'll amend it, or whatever we need to do. And I'll see if the council agrees with me, and we'll accept that.
Wouldn't we just remove the change to 15, 2 dash?
We would have to amend it, right, to strike that section correct.
On this, on the same topic, I have a thought. Listen to the chief, they schedule, or pre-schedule their annual leave. Right, chief?
Yes.
So I don't know if every department does that. I looked at the ordinance, and it says that, I guess supervisors or directors are encouraged to schedule annual leave in order to meet the needs of the department and everything. So you just can't get off for annual leave when you want. And it sounds like y'all are doing that, chief guys, or probably based on seniority, who wants off when? So you got your annual leave scheduled. And I understand why the first day you're sick, whether you're legitimately sick or not, is to prevent as much as you can the gaming of sick leave. But why, why not just use your sick leave for sick leave, and your day of annual leave, rather than penalize you with, using that first day of your annual leave, just make it all straight sick leave time? My, I would hazard a guess and say that as directors out there, anybody who's worked with you for a while, my guess is, you know your staff well enough to know who games the system and who doesn't. Maybe not every single time, but most of the time. And there are always people looking to game this situation. But I think it would just be a lot cleaner, that sick leave day is for sick leave. And if the directors have a question, you ask for a doctor's note. Cost you 100 bucks for an office visit? I don't think so. Can't you go to med analysis? Can you get a no from a nurse practitioner? If you could do that, you wouldn't penalize anybody for their annual leave.
Okay, just, just a thought. Mr. Deming had another thought.
So just, well, I just wanted to play devil's advocate. Couple of things. One, if we keep sick leave for annual leave, and we don't require a doctor's notice, then sick leave just becomes free annual leave. If you, people just get sick and use sick leave, I think one day of annual leave is a great deterrent to get people to not just play sick to get a free paid day off. Second, to address the med analysis, which I proposed to numerous people that called me and discussed this, the thing I heard the most was, can't get in. It's too tough to get in that day. If I'm sick, I got to go pay Alpha Care or another place, because you got to schedule to get into med analysis. So if we wanted to use that, because I think it's a great, I think it's a great benefit, but we need it staffed better, so they can take on more people.
Let me address that comment. And I've been hearing that for a couple of years, and I've checked several times with med analysis. And I said, I'm hearing that employees can't get in. If they're ill, they show up, they can't be seen, they've got a schedule, they can't schedule for that day. And they said, it would work a lot better if city employees who scheduled an appointment would actually appear for their appointment. And I said, well, what percent don't do that? Don't call you and cancel their appointment? Eh, generally anywhere from 20 to 40%, depending on the time of the year, whatever. So part of, part of the problem is, if you schedule an appointment, go. If you don't go, cancel it well ahead, so that other city employees can get in. That's all I wanted to say on there. Robert, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm done. That was-
Any other questions from the council? If not, I'd like to jump on my computer, maybe for 15, 20 minutes, and maybe I can clarify some concerns and points that I have about all this. So please bear with me.
You got the clock running?
Are we, are we ending this?
So we're done.
I'm confused. Are we, are we-
He has a presentation.
Oh, okay. I got you.
About what?
Well, he said he was going to close his computer. He meant in front of all of us. Yeah. Jill, hey, when I walked out, I heard you guys talk about the minimum, the maximum minimum for each pay scale. What was the, what was the discussion about just taking these percentages and bumping both of those numbers up, those percentages? So the people, if they're at the top of that pay scale, if it's a maximum, they wouldn't receive the 6% because they're, they hit the ceiling, right? So then shouldn't the ceiling and the floor, since the floor, everybody, if you're being paid the floor, and your pay is going to be raised 6%, why not just raise the floor and the ceiling 6% from, for every level, is what I'm saying?
Because, let me say that about this, or this about that. It's, it's, there is no job on its own, that the top is 40% more than the bottom in the grade. And that's the problem with the existing setup. You know, it can't be that much of difference. I mean, if we were tight, you know, say it was a 15% spread from job to job, you know, maybe we need to go to the job versus to a grade. I think it's, it would be more reasonable to tighten up the spread, and then do those things. If, you know, if we get a 5%, lift that up, you know, because we're probably shifting the whole thing.
We don't have anybody at the top of the-
Not even close.
So nobody's in jeopardy of not, not seeing the full percentage of that increase at that pay grade?
Everybody will get the full percentage.
Oh, yeah. Not even close.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so let me-
But you, when I was saying that you reduced that-
Let me wait a little longer.
High and low, men and max.
Right.
You know, that would actually push people if, you know, you would get a 10% raise, which, you know, it could be, whatever. But I think as it sits now, the men's and max is a big, big spread. And, you know, out of 600 employees, we may have four or five, you know-
Well, no, if it's, if it's not going to affect anybody hitting a ceiling, then I think it's fine. Then it is just a across-the-board raises. Right, okay.
Okay, so what I've tried to do here is, if you look at, you'll notice some of these documents you have. Number three, current compensation schedule. I tried to put this in terms to make it a little more understandable, at least for me. I'll share that with you. This is the current compensation schedule, and then the hourly rate versus the mayor's proposal. Earlier, we had talked about steps. Well, at the time, it was step one, grade 10, you started at 1092, and as the steps increased, this was what the increase was. Same thing with the grades, as you go down. With these cells, for example, on grade 10, what the mayor's proposing, we no longer start folks at 1092, we would start folks basically at 1250 an hour. Currently, grade 10, step 6 is 1247. But what the mayor's proposing is that we start folks at 1250 an hour. That's the minimum. And the max would be 15.21. All right? Based on what we know at this point, forget any of the steps in between. You just have a minimum and a maximum. So if the mayor, or anybody, wants to hire somebody to start at grade 10, where do you start them? Well, maybe they have experience doing whatever they do. Maybe there are other, other factors that warrant the mayor placing them at 12.93 an hour, or 13.16 an hour. Maybe just 13 an hour. Anywhere between that minimum and maximum. Is that, is that correct, Mayor?
Councilman?
Yes, Councilman.
It says three in black up there. My three up in black here doesn't look like that, and it's hard to see those numbers. So is this the first page we're looking at? so is this the first page we're looking at?
It's page three.
Yes.
Can't see them at all. It's page three. What it says, no?
That's what it says, but the chart doesn't coincide with...
It's on the screen. What we have.
With what we have.
All right, so, well...
It's on the...
Three is one.
It's the fourth...
Yeah, so three is one, okay.
Take a moment, so we're all on the same page. That's part of my concern every time we have a discussion, is we have nothing to look at, and it's hard to follow these things. Okay, everybody on the same page with me?
We're on page one. I'm assuming...
Where, where, is that number correct? The current compensation schedule and the hourly rate versus the mayor's proposal?
The next one.
Okay, so we're on page four, which is the second page three.
That's the fourth page in the sequences.
Don't make this any more complicated than it has to be. Look for the three, the top left corner that says current compensation schedule. There, there you go. So the point is, that is, if you look at what the mayor's proposed, he's raised the starting salary to twelve fifty an hour, and the max for those jobs associated with grade ten, max out at fifteen twenty-one an hour. All right? As you look at grade eleven, the minimum starts at twelve fifty an hour, the maximum is fifteen eighty-two an hour. So anybody that's hired in the city of Biloxi, new, can be started anywhere between that minimum and that maximum. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
I think so.
There you go. All right, so that gives a lot of, a lot of latitude to the administration. All right? The next thing is grade twelve, you get the idea, the minimum, and then the maximum. When you get to step fourteen, excuse me, grade fourteen and every grade thereafter, the minimum remains the same. Okay? The maximum, as you can see on the far right, is a little bit higher than the current step sixteen. So I wanted some way to compare what we currently have to what the mayor's proposing. This is the best handout I could come up with. So this is the hourly rate, and then you see the next page, four in the top left corner, that's the annual rate. So three was the hourly rate, four is, this is what those folks would earn a year. So, hold on just a minute. So, grade ten, my annual starting salary would be, with the mayor's proposal would be twenty-six thousand, and the maximum would be thirty-one thousand. So anybody who's hired for a grade ten position could start anywhere between the two. That's correct, mayor? Okay. You had a question?
Yeah, let me ask Jill. Where it was different, and I assume that step A of grade one, or grade ten, bumped up a little bit, because we used that C or B schedule, step sixteen. That's why the difference is, right?
Correct.
Okay. Basically, you're right. But of the three, A, B, and C, go step one of A, step sixteen in B is that highlighted number?
That fifteen twenty-one, right. I mean, I know there's a rationale, we've talked about it.
But basically, it is hollow.
Right, but, but, now what this done, the advantage is, and I think the human resource supervisor would tell you, the beauty of this plan is, you wanna give somebody a percentage increase? Not a problem. Bingo. Snap your fingers and do that. You could do that with any spreadsheet, basically. So there are advantages from the administrative point of view on what's proposed, but there are also some disadvantages. If, if Ms. Newman and Mr. Guines are both currently in grade ten somewhere, maybe Ms. Newman is at step eight, and Mr. Guines is at step eleven, is what, as to what the mayor said, if they both get satisfactory evaluations, they get a raise. But again, I don't know how much the raise is. The administration's gonna make that decision, correct?
In this case, okay, you'll be in step one, or step five, or six, and she's in step seven. We're gonna apply to each one of those rates, that percentage, whether it's six and a half, five and a half, five twenty-five. So the dollar will be different, the dollar value of the raise will be different, but the percentage will be the same.
Right. The other, the other concern I have is, to some degree, and to my way of thinking, there's a lack of transparency, simply because the minimum and the maximum, as the mayor said, it's forty percent, that's basically what his research indicates, it typically is or has been. And again, I worry about, most folks can tell you what they earn, but I want you to think about employees for a moment. There's always a lot of drama with employees, no matter the line of work. And everybody gets a raise, does everybody get the same raise? Maybe they do, maybe they don't. There are employees who currently get raises that the council knows nothing about, and that's the way the ordinances read. That's right. Rip that scab off, okay? And there's no way of the council finding that out, as long as the ordinance is followed, the supervisor can recommend somebody, goes to the C A O, goes to the mayor, they sign off, that person's got a raise. And I think that had something...
Your mic, your mic got turned off somehow?
Your mic's on?
The council doesn't approve pay raises.
Let me say this about what H R has done, and before we started this research, when you're talking about figuring out who, who step, you know, the current rate is the current rate, you, three years ago, you were making the current rate. We, you know, asked, in, two months ago and three months ago, when we started doing this, we looked at rates for each employee since two thousand nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. And there's an explanation, this was a merit increase in step from here to here. So there is some documentation, H R has those documentation, but we studied the last three years of that, you know, in proposing what we're proposing. To jump forward, yeah, no, if you're in the same step, you're gonna, you're, a couple of steps different within the same grade, you're gonna apply, in this case, if it's six percent, six percent dollarization's gonna be different, lower step to the, so that's just the way it is.
And, and just a fine point, whenever you deal with increases in terms of percentages, that spread between minimum and maximum, what the dollarization is, increases as you know that, and then that becomes sometimes a matter of equity. Another way to look at the mayor's proposal, so this compares the current compensation schedule, and the beginning rate is now twelve fifty instead of ten ninety-two, but this kinda gives you an idea of basically how the compensation schedule would change. So let's look next. And this, this document is another perspective. It's got minimum, it's got, well, you see the headings, it's got the grade, the minimum, twelve fifty an hour, what that annual leave amounts to, the maximum, fifteen twenty-one for pay grade ten, what that annual salary is, and what those positions are. Look at grade eleven. The minimum rate, twelve fifty, annual rate's twenty-six thousand. There's no difference between grades ten and eleven, zero percent. The maximum is fifteen eighty-two, annual salary thirty-two thousand. The maximum difference rate is sixty-one cents. That's from the grade before to the grade here. Again, this kinda deals more with, with the integrity, as Ms. Paul alluded to earlier. So if you look down through this, it kinda gives, it's just a different way to look at it, is all. But at the bottom, at the bottom, you see, some of it's printed in yellow in that first column, those are summer, summer jobs, and then for police department, they're coded blue, fire department is pink or red. Disregard, the only reason I put this area in, in the gray section, because what I'm shooting for here would be an annual increase for every employee who performs satisfactorily. And it could be a percent, and it may only be one percent, but it would be something every year. Now, the police department, their pay is structured differently. Hold that thought, mayor. All right, the police department is structured differently, as is the fire department, because the fire department works a wild and crazy schedule, and there's some overtime involved and so forth. But I'm thinking if there were to be an annual increase, just hypothetically, what would the current hourly rate compare to in terms of the current grade? Right, and they're not exact, but roughly, roughly, this is what they correspond to, very roughly. And again, those positions are ranked there. And the reason I mention that is, if it was possible, and I think it might be possible, to give every employee a pay increase, even if it's just one percent a year, you know you're gonna get that one percent every year. Okay? You know when you'd get it, you know what that, hang on, Nathan, I'll get to you, I promise. But you'd know when you're gonna get it and what that amount would be. All right, Nathan, you had a question?
Yeah. Are you talking, when you're talking about this percentage or whatever per year, are you talking in addition to what's being proposed, or in lieu of?
That's, that's a good question. That's a good question. What you, what you, what you...
Well, I, it's just a yes or...
Let me, let me skip, let me skip to the next one. For Robert Demming, this is number five in the top left corner. So I know this looks busy.
It is.
So right now, we currently have, we currently have sixteen steps. Okay? And we start at twelve fifty. There are three factors to consider, only three. One is the base hourly rate, we'll call it. The other is what percentage is associated with each step increase. And I just plugged in one and a half percent. For each grade, I plugged in four percent over here. But again, you can change these variables. If it was one percent a year, for the first four year, five years you're employed, that's what the increase would be. If you did the same thing and continued that just at one percent a year... So if it was just a straight one percent, this is, this is what the salary schedule would look like. If, hold that thought, mayor. If you decided to change the hourly rate from twelve fifty an hour to twelve seventy-five an hour, if you gave everybody a quarter an hour raise, or to the base hourly rate... That's how your compensation schedule would change. Now, you could set up the step increase for the first five years, you could make the first five years, if you're trying to hold on to people, make it three percent. Okay? Maybe the next five years you're here, you only want it to be one percent, but the point is, that's a variable. The grade increase is a variable. Okay, so those are really the only three things we're talking about on this page right here.
So you, you said...
Hang on, let me get to the mayor first, because he almost dislocated his shoulder. Go ahead, mayor.
You know, this is the whole idea, if it's your position, we could be here, we could do about three million dollars for, for, if it doesn't happen, since two thousand sixteen. That could end in a lot of trouble, a lot of end, giving us the ability to schedule the pay down based on the market, whether for the picture of debt or revenue. That thing go off again. You know, based on the conditions of, you know, fund balance, or, you know, unencumbered cash at the, you know, September one, it gives us a position to look at it between that October one and the next calendar year, conditions such as if we save a million and a half in medical benefits. So I would look at it as look at a dollarization and translate it to those steps in between. If, if we're in a position to do a million dollars, or two million dollars, you're driving at the same thing. This is, this is what we need to do, whether it's a point, or point and a half, or three point. And then we know whether there are any conditions in the existing compensation schedule that needs to be revisited, but it's gonna prepare us to look five years down the road, and I think that's what you were trying to do. But, but the dollar rise, you know, we, you know, again, that one percent in base salary translates to another, you know, seventeen percent of that one percent in peers, in another, you know, you know...
Right. Associated benefits.
Yeah, the things that cost us to do that deal. But it gives us a position, let's say, you know, in forecasting, we look like we're gonna have a couple of million dollars to do things. Then it gives us a, you know, more programmable way to deliver this to our employees. I think that's what you were trying to do, but, you know, I don't, you know, in this exercise, we're trying to catch up to a point where we can program the next five years. I think that's what you're trying to say.
Well, and I think we have some things in common, but we differ on some things. One, again, is, I would love to see an annual pay raise, but the question is, how much?
And how do you base it? What is it based on?
And, and if you wanted to look at a particular figure, if the city had a good year, then I would think that's gonna be reflected in the CAFR...
How do you define it?
Somewhere, and, and as long as that, that figure, whatever, however it was identified, maybe it's, I'm no account, maybe it's cash on hand at the end of the year, all right, or maybe it's something else. And if, if the figure was, if that amount was greater than a particular figure, good. If it's eight hundred thousand over, good. We can look at distributing that this year. Okay? I think, Robert, had, Robert, did you have a question?
Well, Nathan had one, and then I'll follow up after Nathan.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, so, so basically, what you're proposing is in lieu of the current proposal?
In a word, yes. Okay.
The challenge, Paul, as I see it, if we go to these percentages, or base it on the CAFR, on one particular year, now we gotta absorb that increase year after year after year after year.
Exactly.
And that is a true challenge. You know, we're increasing, this increase is going forward permanently, not only this year, but next year and the year after, and the year after, and we just don't know if we have a good year and say, okay, we're gonna increase it to six percent, then we gotta absorb that burden going forward too.
Let me ask you this.
You with the shoulder again, go ahead.
Okay, you're proposing taking a scheduled increase of point, a point and a half for the next five years versus not doing this? Okay, I can see where I can program so many, so we can do this immediately and solve some problems, and then figure out what the parameter is. I'm gonna give you an example. We, you know, when I was in, in, in the software business, and we had a number that was always increasing, and it was maintenance and support. As I build my customer base, I, this revenue's gonna increase, and I programmed fifteen percent of that figure to be passed to employees. Never gonna go down, but yet that was the component, the component, so we need to, I think you're driving at the same thing. Let's do this, what I would propose, doing this immediately, and then figure out a way that we would expect to do a point, another percent, you know, given the CAFR or some other conditions.
Well, to, to answer, I think, Nathan's question, and some of you are wondering, because, holy mackerel, how can, how can we do this, because the future is uncertain? A couple of things. Number one, what we've done, what the city has done in the past is, when you reach step sixteen, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're still here, Jill, if you reach step sixteen, you got another pay raise, like everybody else did. It's just that there was no step seventeen. That's how we ended up with the current compensation schedule we have with the A, Bs, and Cs. That's how we ended up with the current compensation schedule we have with the A, Bs, and Cs. But as, as folks retire, I'm an executive secretary making forty-eight thousand, I retire, I hire a new secretary, I hire George Lawrence as my secretary, he starts at thirty-two thousand, I just saved sixteen thousand. So as folks, as folks retire through attrition, you're saving that money, but you're also paying some of that out to the new hires. The question is, and the word always used was, sustainable. So, the question in your mind is, is one percent sustainable? That's a good question. Somebody would have to do the research, and nobody has even attempted to do the research, although I have offered to do the research, but somebody needs to go back. Just look at the last ten years, how many folks retired, how much money did that save, who replaced them, what did it cost you, whatever the difference is cumulatively, might be able to fund a one percent, historically, might be able to fund one percent, might be able to fund one and a quarter percent, might be able to fund two-thirds of one percent, but it would be something. And the reason I mention that is because the last pay raise was two thousand sixteen? Two thousand sixteen, and there's, we're gonna, we're gonna get, the employees are gonna get a pay raise, all right, one way or another, but then, we don't know when the next one's coming along, 'cause we don't know when the next good year is coming along, Mr. Barrett. Or the bad year, or a bad year.
I'm gonna be really quick, because we've only got a couple of minutes to our regular meeting, but my, my response to that is I have no problem supporting a, a pay raise annually based upon some parameters, like the mayor said. However, the reality is this, our employees, when they go to the grocery store, there's been a six percent increase in what it's costing them, six-plus percent at the grocery store, double at the gas station, and so they need this relief now, not, not built in over four or five years, they need this relief now. I'm willing to support something based upon parameters, if we have this much money in our, you know, that extra every year, or if we have this much projected revenue for the year, I'm, I'm willing to su- support a pay raise from this percent to this percent annually, however, our employees need this pay raise now, and so, that, that's just my stance.
Yeah, I, I don't think anybody, I mean, I understand that, I, I agree with a great deal of that.
We gotta put this in effect now.
I think so.
Well, can I ask a couple of questions, just easy questions that can be answered? What is the difference between a construction one and a construction two? That should be simple.
Let, let me, let me point...
I don't know, I just wanna know what a construction one is.
All right.
Say it's one.
I don't believe there is any difference, I don't know if Ms. Paul is here, but again, when you're a crew member one and you reach the top of the salary schedule...
You're, you're getting, that's not where I'm going with this.
Okay, go with it.
So there's an administrative assistant one, administrative assistant two, administrative assistant three, and there's a pay scale that climbs, but you can be hired as an administrative assistant two, getting paid less than an administrative assistant one at the fifteenth scale, until you get to administrative two at the tenth scale, then you don't, then you, at that point, you then exceed what administrative, why? Why don't just have an administrative assistants and give them raises as their job goes? Why have all of this? We know what jobs we have, just create a pay scale, pay them appropriately, and follow, follow structured raises through, through incentive work?
Restructuring the, the descriptions and the, and the jobs, you know, in a, in a reasonable manner, although we tried to do this fast, and, and, you know, that, that's, that seems reasonable, and I'm not opposed to doing that, I'm not opposed to, to looking at an annual going forward, a, a percentage, and figuring out what the number is so we can do it. It, it could be restructured, you know, this is in order to do the things we talked about immediately, by January one, this is the reason why this compensation amendment is on the thing, so it's gonna take a number of, you know, a big effort to, to put this in, in, in the employee's hands by that first pay period in January. So we, this is critical to, uh, agree to this, uh, changes in the compensations.
I mean, just to have all these different classifications for one job with sixteen different steps for each classification, you're talking about an accounting nightmare, I'm sure this is, there's an easier way and faster way to do this. But I, I agree with, with Nathan, based off of national inflation, the cost of living has gone up drastically, and we do have to meet that, a- as well as retaining the employees that we have, and incentivizing new people to, to apply for the police department and for public works in other areas. I'm just blown away with the way this is structured, and I hope that we can find a better way to do it. I know there's a better way to do it, this is just very convoluted. That's all I have.
It is perfect, Johnny, and, uh, I'll entertain a motion. Do we recess or adjourn? We adjourn, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Lawrence.
All in favor.
All in favor. All right, it's a seven oh vote, thank you. We'll start the council meeting in about two minutes, thank you.